We'd like to welcome all of you to our meeting this evening on this fine Monday, December 10th, a rainy one at that, but we do want to commend all those that we just highlighted in our earlier reception, young men and women that got perfect scores. I believe it's the 4th grade.
Third, 4th, and 5th grade.
Third, 4th, and 5th grade MCAS, so congratulations to them and the great work that they did. Mention them again in a little bit. But with that, are there any comments from the general public this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to comments from the EAPC.
Welcome Donna Rancy.
Thank you.
Hi, Colonel.
First of all, thank you for having me and happy holidays to everyone. I had a chance last week to be able to go to the high school and to the elementary school for their faculty meetings, and I would like to thank all of the staff and administration for making me feel so comfortable. At the high school, Mr. Neef very kindly gave me a summary of the summary of the Neask Report, so that I could get through it okay. I was very impressed with the staff's attitude toward it, and you know, their viewpoint was, okay, let's see what we can do to make ourselves even better. And then at the elementary school, the energy, I was dragging, but the energy for the staff at that meeting was fabulous. I walked out of there energized. And it suddenly occurred to me that they have one more challenge working in those two buildings, and that was, how do they team when there's two totally separate buildings? So I'm imagining in the wintertime that when they go to each other's lunches, they have to put on the boots and the coats and the hats and the... So that's another whole aspect that had never even occurred to me. So as a result of that, I feel very thankful and very honored to represent them, and I wish everybody a happy holiday.
Likewise, thank you Donna. With that, do we have an update from the Student Advisory Council and Captain's Council? I believe we see some students with us. You guys have just come on up and introduced yourselves and what group you're with?
Hi, my name's Alex Burr. I'm the secretary for Captain's Council.
My name's Brooke Rodriguez, and I am a representative of the Captain's Council.
So right now, we have, coming up, we're going to do the mini camps that we did over holiday break again. We're going to do that for two mornings where we can kind of introduce all the different sports to some younger children. And then we also are hoping to order our rally towels to increase school spirit to sell at the basketball games, so they're going to be Carver Crusader rally towels.
That's about it?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, girls.
At this time, we would like those representatives from the Music Boosters to join us at the microphone.
Just pull up those three cheers. And while they go, I just want to give them applause ahead of time. I know Linda was here last time too, but you guys did a awesome job. She was here a couple months ago, I think.
Not for school committee, she's shy.
No, she was in the audience, I don't think she spoke. She came for her daughter last... That's what it was, yeah. So I think I said something bad. So do you all want to introduce yourselves, and then we'll brag on you?
I'm Julie Hill Grant, I'm the president of Music Boosters.
I'm Bob Gonzales.
Bruce Skinner, resident photographer.
Nice. So last year, Mr. Gonzales came to us and told us his plan.
Our.
Yeah.
Our plan.
Your plan, all your plans, and you were going to raise money to buy all these instruments for the students, and you were unbelievably successful.
We've done very well, yeah. Well, and no small thanks to Linda Arminetti, who was tireless in her efforts, and thanks to the community and the generous, the generosity of individuals and community businesses. We raised a little over $12,000 in about six months.
Right, a little bit less than three, in six months.
Yeah, I mean, our original goal was $16,000, but we made it to 12, and we're able to get all the instruments, I think it was about nine or 10 instruments, that they needed in the middle and high school band. And we were able to get them at discount and barter and trade, and much less than what we really, that we originally intended, so very successful, very successful.
We can't thank you enough, and I know the students and the music teachers are just ever so grateful, because it makes a huge difference. Usually you get these expensive instruments when you build a new school as part of the equipment, because these are things usually that you don't take home every night. And so it's really great that you were able to pitch in, because you know, we just can't afford it in our regular budget, so it's unbelievable what you've done for the children.
We're all very anxious to hear how they sound at the upcoming concerts.
Yes, Thursday night.
Yes. I was going to say, if you want to refresh our public and let them know about that concert, please.
We've got the elementary school concert is coming up this Wednesday, that starts at 6:30, I believe. Middle school concert, band and chorus is on Thursday, the 13th, at 7:00. And the high school band and chorus concert is December 20th, I believe, that's a Thursday also, at 7 o'clock. And the Music Boosters will be selling holiday ornaments, and I think that's... And we've also got two beautiful new trophy cases in the middle school lobby with all our long-forgotten trophies and plaques that have been sitting collecting dust for years, who knows where, and now they're all beautifully displayed in the lobby. I hope everyone will take a look at that.
What are some future goals for the Boosters?
Go ahead, Julie. I would say, you know, and Julie doesn't take enough credit for it, and Linda, that you know, we established a website that's up and running, and everybody should check that out. It looks great, and we're trying to push a lot of more information that way. Number two, you know, we did establish, and thank you to the school committee for helping us with establishing just a small fee for coming in, for entrance fee, and that's really done a lot to make sure that we can sustain the whole Boosters, well, the music program within there, within the schools, so that's been very helpful. And we've also got our nonprofit status as well, which was always kind of a contentious issue, but now is, you know, Julie and Linda again have done a great job establishing that, so now we can set ourselves up for some programs that are a little bit more long-term and some...
Apply for grants and that sort of thing.
That type of thing. So right now, we're kind of the next really immediate thing, there's, we're looking at one thing for that concert potentially.
Right.
It's still in the planning stage, so we'll let you know about that maybe a little bit in a couple more months. And really, the most one at hand is really just the ornament sales.
Ornament sales, and in March, we have March Music Madness, which is always very popular with the students, their families, and the community, the cafe-style entertainment we have in the cafeteria, so...
And that goes to scholarships.
Right.
Right, and we awarded three scholarships last year, the senior's league.
So we're taking a little breather until we do our next big thing.
Well deserved. How many people are on the committee now?
Well, it's kind of, it's, there's probably about seven or eight regulars.
So I would assume that anybody who wishes to volunteer their time, you would replace them, right?
Absolutely.
You'd beat me to the punch.
We'd especially like to see some fresh, young, new blood. The elementary parents and middle school parents come on board, and it's just such a great program, and we've got such amazing talent, students and faculty, and it's just a lot of fun. We all do it, it's a labor of love.
So a great way to get involved is to check out your website?
Yeah, what is the name of that?
Carver Music Boosters.org, www.carvermusicboosters.org. News, events, photos, information, contact us.
Yep, interested, I mean, it's easy to become a member of the Boosters once a month. We have a meeting once a month, and then...
Do as little or as much as you can.
Do you have a link on our website to yours?
Yes, yes. It's under parent groups or something like that.
Yeah, okay. But we could also put it, there's a news scroll at the top, and we could put it there so people could find it, you know.
That would be helpful too, yeah.
Can do that.
Great, well, thanks, thank you again.
Thank you, thank you for the support.
With that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of November 5th, 2012, both regular and executive. Let's, we'll start with the regular. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to look those over.
I make a motion to approve the regular minutes of November 5th, 2012.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Matt.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion over the minutes? Any corrections or changes that anyone saw? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
With that, we'll move on to communications.
Executive session minutes, maybe?
Oh, did we not conclude them both there?
No, you broke them all.
I missed one, my apologies.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of November 5th.
Second, Matt.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have four and one abstained. Now, with that, we'll move on to communications, thank you, Captain.
Do you have to accept the 19th as a separate?
Are we going to do that tonight? I just got the 19th.
Oh, okay.
We can go, I mean, if everybody read them, did everybody read them? The ones from the 19th, I just got them tonight, I didn't see them in my packet.
I didn't see them in mine either, that's why I haven't...
So can we vote those? You're the next one.
They were on the desk, they weren't in the packet.
Sorry. If any is opposed, we'll table it till the next meeting. Give everybody a chance to look it over? That's fine. Well, we did vote on the 19th, didn't we? Yes. Take a second to look over the 19th?
Okay, what am I missing here, where am I?
Apologies, leaving quick to our spots. Does everyone have one now? Everybody have a copy?
Yep.
All right, I have November 5th.
And I believe we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the minutes on the 19th.
We have a motion for the 19th, do we have a second?
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And are you here?
Wait a second, I have that one. I apologize, I've seen from that, on the 5th.
Did you get that? Sorry for the confusion. With that, moving on to communications.
Yes, so in your packet, under the tab A, you can see a picture of our band students at Band Day at Gillette Stadium, where they were playing all their new instruments and having a great day. If you go on their website, they have pictures of Band Day that Mr. Skinner took, and it's just a great celebration of kids having fun and doing what they love. So we really want to congratulate the students on their great performance, they were also wonderful at Homecoming, very, very strong band at Homecoming this year, it was nice. We also want to congratulate our culinary team again. They went to the New England Food Festival, and they made the first place in, two first-place honors, the first being at the judges' choice for best booth design, where they collaborated with an art teacher and her classes, and did a really fine job of constructing campfires seen for their theme for their food. And they also won the People's Choice Award for Best Dessert. So they do very well, considering that we're a very, very small culinary program, and they keep bringing these first place home. And they'll be competing in the, what's in that one? It's the Restaurant Association in January, so they will...
It's in February.
Yeah, and so they will start off in Cambridge, and if they win again, they'll be going someplace else exciting. So we're very proud of our culinary team. You can see some pictures from the event under tab B. Once again, we want to thank Blair Insurance, Delano Journeys, and the Country Veterinary Clinic for flag donations, they do this yearly, and since we display our flags 24 hours a day, they wear out very quickly, so this is nice to have a constant reply, supply of those. So we thank them, and we have written them letters in your behalf, in the school's behalf, to thank them. And then, we do have one sad note, that our brand-new associate principal, Zach Wadiker, is so good, they hired him away to be a principal in Somerset, so it's...
He might be inspiring today.
I guess not, you know. It's hard to say goodbye, but it's good for Zach, I mean, he gets to be a principal, and we're going to do a search, but we're going to wait to spring and have interim associate principals, so that we can, you know, finish the gear in good standing and not try to train a new person in the middle of the year, which seems to be the best for all concerned, so we wish Zach well. But we will, we're very lucky to have someone we can count on right here. So Ruby, would you like to introduce your interim?
Sure. So I just wanted to say good evening, and thank you all for coming tonight in a wet and dreary night, but before I introduce Mrs. McDonough, I just wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Wadiker, and we will absolutely miss him. We had him for one year, and it was a great three-member administrative team, he brought a lot to the table, and we wish him well, and we'll miss him. So actually, what I'd like to introduce you, what I'd like to do next is introduce Mrs. Kathy McDonough, she will be our interim. She comes from seven years of experience as an assistant principal. She will be able to step right in and do some things that we will, we won't, will not necessarily have to do, some real hands-on training, she'll be able to step right in, and that's very important to me at this time, to have as smooth a transition as possible. So Mrs. McDonough will actually be starting with us this week, she will be coming in on Wednesday, and then again on Thursday and the next week, and her first official day will be January 2nd, so Kathy, if you'd like to come on up and just, 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 just say welcome?
Thank you very much, I'm very excited to join the team at the elementary school, and I really look forward to the next six months, it should be a great opportunity and a great experience, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we feel very fortunate that Kathy, she did an internship with us at the middle and high school level eight years ago, is that right Kathy?
That's right.
And now she's going to complete the circle and work with us at the elementary level, so this is good for everybody. Then, next, I worked with Patrick, and on the blue sheet, we sort of divided out the pieces of the budget that we would discuss at the next few school committee meetings, and we've also shared it with town hall and FENCOM, so that at any time they want to come to these presentations. It seems kind of rushed when we do try to do the budget in just one or two sessions, that particularly, I think FENCOM just doesn't have a chance to get all their questions answered, so we've decided to break it out. So tonight, we will be looking at the elementary and middle school budget with, through the eyes of principals who prepare them, and then we're also going to look at our current capital outlay plan and talk about what you might want to move forward to be in the plan for the 2014 capital outlay budget. On the January school committee meeting, Karen Tykert and I will be presenting, Karen will present her budget, and I will talk about the whole of the special education budget as it represents in our whole budget. Dave Seidenthal will be here and talk about facilities and maintenance and his needs for 2014. Mike Schultz will come and talk about the athletics and comprehensive health budget, and then we will fine-tune the capital outlay on what we want to put forth in February, we always meet with capital outlay, what is it we're going to ask the town to support. We have a very articulated plan that we made five years ago, but we update it every year, because sometimes things move to the top quicker than others, when we have two aging buildings and one that's reaching its maturity, the middle and high school, so sometimes we have to put things forward as things break down or seem in needs of repair. So that's the plan for January, and then in February, salaries and benefits, utilities, and transportation, and Patrick and I will be doing that one. Then in March will be the cap, we'll put it all together in one presentation, it's the official budget hearing that we always do, and then we will take that same budget to March 26th, to the board of selectmen, so, and by then we should know something from the state for revenue.
Money-wise, any questions, or any thoughts for Liz on this topic?
We usually do a Saturday, is one of these March dates a Saturday? I'm just flipping through my calendar.
No, we did a Saturday when we had three out of the five school committee members were brand-new to the process. So it was sort of a crash, crash, crash course, and that was later, much later in the process.
Don't we do one though with like the selectmen and the FENCOM, like, isn't it more like a...
No, they've usually been coming to our meeting.
Okay, I thought we did something else.
We had the big table set.
Yeah, no, I do.
You're right, Paula, it was a couple of years ago, we, it was not last year, but the years previous, we used to go and meet with them on Saturday, and a big chunk of time, and then on Tuesday nights as well at the selectmen's room, we did it.
Well, Saturday is capital outlay for sure.
Right.
But since I've been here, we haven't had the budget on a Saturday, except for this when the new school committee people came on and we had to do that. But if you want to have a Saturday, we can schedule a Saturday.
No, not necessary, just checking.
I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, I'm taking a hand vote on that one. Any other questions about the schedule?
So Patrick, capital outlay, which is C in your book.
What I wanted to do is just say a few words about this, not really to go into any detail, because we're going to do that in the subsequent months, but just as a prelude to get ready for some things. What's in your packet is a, is the FY13 capital outlay plan, the five-year plan that we did come up with, and as you see at the end, it's got quite a, quite a large number, altogether it's, you know, $27 million. Part of that was due to some of the issues that we wanted to identify at the elementary school building, and the, which was $21 million, and the remaining six or seven were current issues or foreseeable issues at the middle and high school, and central office, transportation, vehicles, equipment, technology, and so forth. The, what we ended up with, and what we were recipients of, only dealt with the transportation portion of FY13, and that was four school buses, one minivan, and a replacement radio system. Those are the three items that were approved for, for the school department, and that left the rest of us, the rest of it, to kind of roll over. The only brand-new thing that we're aware of right now deals with the wastewater treatment plant at the high school. We've been dealing with DEP over the past several years as to what we're going to do with, with the wastewater treatment plant, since it does not comply with the current permitting process. And we're having a engineering study done right now to see what the outcome of that should be. We don't know what that, what that's going to be yet, we will know by the time we get in with, with capital outlay, but it, it seems like it's going, and this is just a broad range, it could, it could run for anywhere from, as far as cost-wise goes, between, say, $200,000 for the, for what I would think would be an ideal fix, or it could end up costing in excess of a million dollars. But we're not going to know what that is until the engineering study is done, the DEP gets a chance to look at it, and then basically, as a result of the information and the data and the analysis, they're going to tell us what we need to do. And that's what we're going to have to do. So that is the only thing that I'm, of significance that I'm realizing right now that has not been in the plan, because we really weren't, weren't looking at that, we were dealing with them, and then finally they said, okay, let's, we got to start to get serious about this. The other thing that I wanted to speak to, and again, not to get into a major discussion or to get into specific detail, but the right column of the five-year plan for the last few years has been costs associated with dealing with the needs of the primary and elementary buildings, and what I titled that was, costs which may be eliminated or reduced with building project approval. I think we know now that the building project approval is going to be several years away. So dealing with that reality, we've got to start looking at some of these things and saying, okay, what are some of these things that, or some of these items, that may be necessary to deal with in the next year or two? And there are several, although we know that in dealing with the MSBA, in dealing with the project that we had, that none of these are going to fall under any sense of reimbursement by the MSBA. They will not reimburse those particular buildings, because as we, when we dealt with them before, it was either, you know, renovate, replace, or, or nothing. So in, if we deal with these things, it's going to be completely at our cost, or the town's cost. Now, what I did is I just met with our facilities director and looked at a few of these things and said, okay, if we had to pick some of these things that we really had to possibly give some attention to in the next year or two, what would they be? And we'll, we can, we're going to get into a little more definitive part of this, but just to give you an idea of what that might be, and it's all basically encompassed on the first two pages, but when you look down the outside column, we look at an upgrade of a problematic security system, it's about $125,000. Replacement of all the exterior windows, and this is in the back building, and you know what kind of shape they're in right now, and that's about a million dollars. And we look at the situation, again, at the, at the front building, we want to talk about, again, windows in the front building, another $600,000. There's been some window replacement in a good part of the front building, but there still is some more to go. On the second page, we look at rooftop units. We've got, we've got a comprehensive offering, not offering, request in there for four and a half million dollars with a whole revamped system with, with new computerized controls and all kinds of other state-of-the-art type of technology involved there for like four and a half million dollars. But the reality of it is, is three of them, three rooftop units on that back building are either very old or original, and those would be, in my estimation, in our estimation, brought to the forefront, and that's about $1.2 million to...
I was going to say, is the 4.5 million completely all the units?
Is all, all seven, plus all the, all the internal controls and a whole new, basically a whole new system, where we wouldn't really be using those, those types anymore. It's just to put a whole new, a whole new HVAC system in. But if we just wanted to replace the three oldest units, it'd be about 1.2 million. Another thing that's problematic in both buildings is the exterior doors. In the rear building, that's... In the rear building, that's estimated about $650,000. In the front building, that's estimated about $400,000. So that's about the point where we stopped and said, you know, some of the things were, I mean, you know, the gym bleachers and so forth, we can get a little bit more out of that, you know, two modular classrooms, we're not going to do that right now. So there were other things that, you know, replacement of the kitchen equipment and so forth, not necessary in the next year or two. But those we felt were.
Out of curiosity, what's the thought process on modulars? What would that fill?
Well, we have one modular that's-
So it would replace that one?
Yeah, that, you know, was, they're built to last a few years. And we've been using them for 20.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that was there when I was here before. Yeah, that's at least 20.
You know, we did have some problems with it when we had all that snow. And we got some engineers down to look at it because the steel was beginning to show stress. But now it's just the whole, the floor is, you know, compromised. And every year, we decide whether or not we're going to use it. So what we do is put the fewest amount of children possible.
And that has the potential to go away if a new facility would come in?
Yeah, oh yeah, go away. But we need the space. So that, you know, you hate to buy another modular unit, but it's just a fact. And we don't know, you know, these rooftop units, replacement may have to come because the parts, they don't make them anymore. And we've been having to pay for them to manufacture parts. Instead of paying a couple hundred dollars for something that off the shelf, you have to pay for it to be manufactured, what we're trying to plan for the eventuality is failure, you know? Because when you have some rooftop units 37-years-old, it will fail eventually. So whether it fails this year or it fails next year, we don't know. But it's just something we need to bring up to people's attention, that, you know, we're very lucky because Dave Seidenthal's field is HVAC. And he's able to get a lot of life out of these very aging units by constant care. But we're just bringing this to your attention, that we're at a point where even if we started and had approval tomorrow, it would be three to four and a half years before you can move in to a new school. So a lot can happen, you know, in three to four and a half years.
Is this anything that would, could be salvaged? You know, eventually, we obviously have to have new buildings. Could it be reused, or is this all going to be trash at a certain point, or do you even know?
Well, you know, it depends on how the, you go. If we have a renovated buildings with new construction to join them together, we'll probably have one heating system for a high efficient, probably not these rooftop units. So, and then we have the boiler in the front building, which is even older. So, you know, we would install a whole different kind of system. So for the rooftop units, I think it's probably not-
Could they be resold? I'm just curious.
Yeah, they could, you know.
I don't think they're worth, really worth anything.
She means that we bought new ones.
If we replace them.
If we replaced them. I suppose if there's not-
If we're replacing them, it's because, it's because they're dead.
What I'm saying is, putting all the money in, say eventually we do put all the newer rooftops, and then we rebuild the school.
Oh, I see, I see what you mean. Those may have some value, yeah. Those could have some resale value. But, you know, what, the whole thought process here was just to bring back home some of these ideas, like what might be imminent in the next year or two, because of the condition of it, because of the, because of what it does. And so what are these things that we should actually be looking at? And if you, on those items that I identified, and maybe there's more, maybe there's less, maybe some people agree with it, maybe some people disagree with it. We thought that was a pretty good, a pretty good conservative list anyway of, and again, what might imminently go wrong. And that totals up to just a little bit under $4 million.
Can I ask a question on that, Pat? I noticed that we have technology on there, but you didn't call it out as one of the more imminent things. And I don't remember the specifics of what the state's going to say about the MCAS or the testing being done on computers, but is that something we need to?
Well, that's what we, every single year, I have that in there. Technology upgrades for $100,000. And that's in every single year. And as you can see, it does talk about MCAS.
Right.
In the descriptive, it talks about MCAS hardware, software, networking, infrastructure, maintenance.
So what's the year they were going to mandate that we?
2015.
So if we don't get that money in 2014, is it too late in 2015? I mean, should we be putting technology on this?
Well, $100,000 would not do it all. So it's like $100,000 a year. We were trying to spread out the pain. I don't know what they're going to say when a school system doesn't have the capacity to do it. I don't know whether it'll be a new cottage industry where you rent a truck with all the infrastructure and you pull it up to your building and get the kids all laptops.
All right, now I have a new business idea.
You know? But, I mean, they were very clear with us that, you know, 2015 would be the last date by which we should be planned to be ready. Now, they didn't give us a lot of lead time on that, but they do change plans. So we're just trying to make the community and the school committee aware that this is a need. The real problem over at the buildings, we don't have the electrical capacity to plug them in. You know, we just upgraded it enough to be able to have one classroom computer, a smartboard, and LCD projector without blowing all the fuses at the same time. So we spent about $10,000 getting that, you know, up, just so we could operate the most basic parts, but-
This reminds me of someone unemployed who doesn't have a car. And they can't get a car because they don't have a job, and they can't get a job because they don't have a car, and you're stuck.
That's state government.
Yeah.
And I think the one secure note in that is that we're not the only community that's going to face that issue.
Exactly.
And the state is going to have to have a plan. And it's in a transition right now anyway, where MCAS is going to be gone, and we're going to be moving to a federal testing with the park.
It's not just the testing, though.
Well, the plan is going to be the same too, but without knowing what you're going to do with the buildings, it's hard to know what you're going to do with that.
Right.
And the state, like I said, the state is going to have to have a plan to make that happen, because most communities aren't going to be able to adapt to that. The buildings can't handle the electric load that's needed. And we're far from view, we're going to be facing that same exact issue, so.
I think-
Not that it would be a good plan coming from the state, but they're going to have to have a plan.
They did have all of us do an assessment, that how ready are we for this? And we completed that assessment for the park or the new test. And they did publish the fact that why the vast majority of schools were ready, that there were still 20% to 26% of the schools that were not, you know, on schedule to be ready. So they're, you're right, they're going to have to figure out how they're going to help us do this. So we just, you know, the capital outlay plan has always been here. We've always tried to do it. And then we do know we have to replace within five to eight years the high school roof. So-
Maybe sooner.
Maybe sooner, because, you know, it's, we have extended its life and extended its life. Now, that would be eligible for MSBA matching funds, the roof, because the building's not old enough yet to be considered having to have a total new building. So we just want to make the committee aware of it, so when you go to make your decision on what we're going to put forward to the capital outlay this year, just have more information at that point.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
So now I'd like to introduce Scott and Ruby. Scott is going to go first and present his budget, and then Ruby.
Welcome, Scott and Ruby.
And you have copies, I think, right beside your, did you all get your copies? James, did you get a copy of the budgets?
Yeah, he has.
Okay.
I had two, memory production, I just want to make sure it's right. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Scott.
So we're going to start presenting first the middle high school budget, and then at the elementary school budget. And we want to start with the basic concept, which I think most of you knows in general. Each year, the school district as a whole, has, last couple of years, has been preparing a level service budget. Meaning that it's a budget that is going to maintain all of our current services, which might have a little bit of increased cost. But we're going to have no growth necessarily in personnel programs, but all the personnel programs there would be in place. And that's been the general approach of the district. At the school level, we do not propose a level service budget. At the school level, we propose a level funded budget. Did I kick my mouse to go over here?
Oh, it's on.
Sorry, it's got to be on, it's a man. So in terms of a level funded budget, meaning we have the exact same amount of money each year from the previous year. So the FY13 budget for the middle high school was $212,936. The proposed FY14 budget is the exact same amount. And if we went back over the last couple of years, it would be the exact same amount. And actually, if we look back over time, in the past 12 years, the school-level budgets have taken a significant cut. So over the past 12 years, the building level spending power has been eroded by inflation and budget cuts. If you go on to the next slide. In the FY02 year, the building-based budget for the middle school and the high school, which at that time were separate buildings, and FY02, the middle school was a separate building from the high school. But the combined budgets of those two schools was about 317, well, was $317,881. Those schools were a little bit bigger, had about 1,000 students. So at that time, our enrollment was a little larger. But our enrollment currently, I believe, is 931 students. So it's not a huge drop in enrollment. But the current FY14 proposed budget is 212,936, a difference of $104,945. So that's a 33% reduction over 12 years. And that does not take into account inflation. So if you really look at the real spending power that we have at the building level in the past 12 years, it's probably been diminished by half, in terms of what was available at the building level to spend. And that kind of frames our budget presentation, and is a huge factor. So what's been the impact of these reductions? Really, I tried to focus it on a couple of areas. One is the inability to maintain replaced textbooks. Is, we've lost a textbook replacement cycle. We do it as we can, kind of hodgepodge. So as we have the opportunity to put some things together, we do. The building has really worked hard to, our favorite thing right now is rebinding textbooks. So the textbooks that are broken or are falling apart, we send them out to be rebound, which is actually a fairly small expense. But since '04, I believe, and '04 was the year that the $100,000 curriculum revision monies was eliminated from the school-wide budget. Before '04, there was $100,000 set aside each year, and that money revolved from department to department, which they could use for curriculum revision. So over a five- or six-year cycle, every department, we have an opportunity. When, since that's been removed from the budget in '04, that money just hasn't been there. So it really has affected our ability to maintain replaced textbooks. It's also limited our ability to invest in technology. That reduction, that small amount of money that the building base has, really limits what we can do in terms of purchasing. Another huge factor that's becoming more and more evident at our building, I know we talk a lot about the elementary school and some of the challenges that they face in terms of the space. And in no way am I trying to say that my challenges are as great, or the middle high school's challenges are as great as those at the elementary school. But the reality is, the building is beginning to show some wear, and some wear and tear. And it's difficult for us to replace furniture and those type of items out of this budget. You know, based on the donations that we got from Plymouth North last year, that really helped us out. It was 125 desks, 75 chairs, eight whiteboards, two sets of science lab tables. Those were things that we were starting to, we were going to have to start to pull from this budget. Because we had a number of desks that were in repair, I mean, that were broken down. We had chairs that were broken and pinching students because they were plastic chairs and had holes in different spots in them. And now it really helped that we were able to come up with a way to solve those issues, primarily to the thanks of, you know, the support of Plymouth, of the school district and Plymouth North High School. But that's not always an opportunity that's going to come around. You know, I don't think we're going to have those opportunities to get those things. So I think there is a concern in terms of how the budget's been eroded, that we're not able to replace furniture over time. And then also, it becomes an issue of, as we start looking at expanding programs, you know, the funding may not be there to expand those new programs without eliminating other programs. So it would become a choice a little bit. Now, that's not always true. For example, the one time since I've been principal that this budget has expanded is we did add an additional $6,000 to this budget last year for virtual high school. Adding the virtual high school program would be an expansion of programs, which goes contrary to what's on my slide. But that would be the one example of where we did do that and the budget was increased. But I think long-term, if we look at the budget that's been in place, that these reductions have affected these four major areas. So I guess kind of any questions on that intro piece, before we actually get into the actual proposals of the FY14 budget itself? I didn't even move it this time. So we broke our budget into, and Ruby and I followed the same format. We broke our budget into basically four key areas. And really, if you looked at our individual line item of our budgets, they fall into one of these four areas. Textbooks, instructional supplies, dues and memberships, office supplies and expenses. Each department chair at the middle high school, or each department, has three line items. They have a textbooks line item, they have an instructional supplies line item, they have a dues and memberships line item. And then all the other office supplies or expenses fall under a general office line item. So all the line items within our budget can be broken into one of these four areas. So maybe we can just take them, and just take a look at them one at a time. If we want to stop after each area, that would be great, and we could talk about it. So the first one is textbooks. In FY13, our total expenditure on textbooks was $27,595. The proposed FY14 expenditure is $30,319, making up about 15% of the school's total budget. The money in the textbook line items are generally used for replacement texts, rebinding of books, consumables, or to renew online textbook accounts. So recent new textbooks that we have been able to purchase in the last 10 years generally come with an online account, and you're able to access the books online. And we also have to look at, you know, just that concept of purchasing books with access online anyhow. But even if you don't have a physical book, there's, obviously, there's still a cost. So that cost comes through subscriptions. So some of the online books that we currently do have, do have renewable subscriptions that have to be paid each year. And that would be paid out through the textbook supply line items. And then also, like I said, the rebinding of books. Consumables, for example, down here, the math journals are consumable. Last year for FY13, we purchased everyday math journals for a cost of $3,060 out of the middle high school budget. Occasionally, there's enough money within a textbook line item to support the purchase of a classroom set for an elective course. So for example, in FY14, we have a proposal out of the budget to purchase 50 new psychology textbooks, based on those textbooks being out of date. And this past year, we purchased 70 used geometry books, the 2008 version, for $4,060. And the people who buy the most books, which would make a little sense, is the English department. Generally, the English department spends a large piece of their budget purchasing novels. And they're all mostly paperbacks. So, but they, pretty much on a regular basis, the English department, a large piece of the English department expenditures go towards purchasing those novels which go into all of our English classes, grade- of our English classes, grade six through 12. And last year, they spent $4,730. Proposal for FY14 is $5,961. Any general questions about textbooks?
Just one. And this is more just clarification, because as you said, it kind of stuck out a little bit. When you had said the textbook line items account for 15% of the total school budget, it doesn't include salaries.
No, no, 100%. So, everything I'm discussing here accounts for our school-based budget of 200, the original number of $212,963, I think was.
Right, and just so the committee.
So, this whole discussion is revolved around that concept.
Right.
So, it's 15% of that building-based budget, not the school district or department.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, and just to make clear, tonight, what they're both presenting is really everything they need to do their jobs. The other pieces come, as we saw on the timeline, the salaries will be a piece of it.
Not that I like, I don't, Pat can give us the real, the close to real number, but the $212,000 is probably close to 1%? And so, what I'm talking about is representing 1% of, around 1% of, the total school district's budget, which most of that is salaries.
Right.
Pat could probably give us a better number on what that percentage is too.
Scott, just curious on, for textbooks on your wish list, so to speak, Level 2.
Yeah.
It's almost $100,000 you're looking to. Is that showing the dire need of our textbooks area? Is that really kind of, because if you look at the rest of your numbers, it's, that seems to be an area of the greatest need?
The greatest need would be the textbook area and the technology area. And, out of our, the NEAS report recommended a creation of a textbook replacement cycle. You know, us developing a plan on how are we going to deal with some of these books that are, that are pretty old and pretty dated. I know I was talking to Steve Davies, State of Science Department Chair, and the current books that they use for senior physics. Our ninth-grade intro physics books are fairly new. The district made an investment in those four years ago, and we switched to that program as an MCAS. That's the MCAS test they take in ninth grade. But we also have a senior physics, the senior physics program, the textbooks are from 1993. He said some of it's outdated, some of it's just old and beat up because they're from 1993. You know, so they're almost 20 years old, and the students have been using them for a long time. And then also, it feels like it's not a great match to the current science/physics curriculum that they've been teaching at the school. One of the foreign language textbook series is from '94 or '95. And like in the beginning section, the example would be, they use words like, they teach them the word cassette, and cassette tape, and tape recorder, and.
Could be eight-track.
Yeah, it could be, it could be eight-track. It could be for the series, you could say eight-track. But even looking at the vocabulary list in the French one series, it's pretty outdated. You even look at the vocabulary, wow, look how much, I mean, start really thinking about how our vocabulary has changed from, you know, 20 years ago. So, it's a combination of outdated, and then it's a combination of, some of them are just beat up. Like, we have a proposal for US history textbooks, and they're not as old, they're only about 10 years old, and the books are just, the problem with the books is they're actually a little bit bigger than our lockers. And so, they've gotten pretty beat up because students make sure they fit. Students make sure they fit within the locker, which has caused some binding issues. And then we feel, they've actually, we've had 70 of those books rebound in the past couple of years, but the feeling is, they're still, they're still falling apart. And, the guy came out who rebinds them for us and said, "I don't think we can do these books again." So, they're pretty, they're pretty beat up. And then, as we went forward, if we looked at textbooks, we could consider locker size. And then we also, we also have to, we also have to consider online availability, which goes to much deeper questions about how students are accessing curriculum, and maybe a discussion we don't necessarily have to go through tonight, but a larger piece in terms of, you know, does everybody have access to those online types of resources? Can we go to online books only?
Yeah, right.
And without actually getting the books? And there are some school districts, like I understand.
Even with that, though, there's still maybe.
There's a technology. There is an annual cost, there's a subscription cost, absolutely. So, those books that have that kind of online setup, there is a subscription component to it. It varies, but for example, we just bought, we bought World History textbooks, I believe, four years ago. I think it was four years ago.
Yeah.
And that series does have an online component, and the subscription lasted for four years, but this year, there's going to be a cost. The original purchase got us four years, but now we're going to have to stop paying a yearly subscription cost for those World History books, which have, which are fully online.
But to your earlier point about the French books, I feel like it does impact the learning of our students, because they're learning outdated material.
Right.
And so, not only are we talking about the, having a tangible thing in their hand, we're talking about education that's maybe not up to spec.
And if you think back to 2004, with the elimination of that curriculum revision money, then I'm sure this impacts the primary elementary school as well, that money, that's now getting close to, well, it's 10 years ago now. And you go 10 years without a real plan on how those things are being replaced, now we're going to get to that point where we're kind of reaching the stretch on that.
What we've been doing in this past seven years is, if you have a mild winter and we have some money left in heating, then I say to Scott.
That's where it comes from.
You want those chemistry books? Okay, what's your first priority? And that's, it's been serendipity is how we've been.
Managing.
Managing it, and the other thing to consider, if we do go to online textbooks, you know, it does mean, pretty much, you have to go to one-to-one.
Right, you have to go to iPad, or laptops.
Do we have to supply a tablet of some sort?
Right, some, that, I said, it gets to much deeper issues in terms of funding, those types of programs.
Yeah, it's definitely a discussion for another day, but something to be thinking about.
I know, I think Cardinal Spellman has gone to one-to-one, and they purchase, they don't have, they're not purchasing real books anymore. But, they've gone to, every student has a tablet. And that's another whole cost structure, like I said, which is not in my budget presentation. So, unless you have any questions on, unless you have any questions on textbooks, I will move on to our next area. Instructional supplies, and even myself, as I put this presentation together and I was thinking about it, I looked at the number, I said, "Wow, $100,000, that's a good amount of money." So, our proposed FY14, $100,890, about 48% of our building-based budget again. When you really think about that in terms of students with a current enrollment of 931 students at the middle high school, it's $110 per student for all subject areas. So, most of us, all of our students take six classes, some take seven. And we're allocating, in essence, $110 per student to cover the instructional needs of all of their classes. And so, when you look at that $100,000 from that perspective, you get a sense of that's, that's a real small amount, say, I have $110 to spend in support of each student.
Considering when I have to buy an ink cartridge for my house, you know, you buy a colored one and a black one, I'm spending 70 bucks. It's amazing that you can get it done with $110.
That lasts, what, two weeks?
Yeah, right.
And, so, we've done some things to address that issue, so we've kind of gone to regionalized printing, and I didn't address that, but we've had to think about those things. You know, so, we, all our teachers are tied into a laser printer, not all, you know, each, there's a section of teachers, there's 10 of them, they're all tied into one laser printer, they all print to that laser. You know, so they don't have individual printing in their own rooms, so that we can try to minimize some of those types of costs, because that itself is so expensive. So, that hundred, that $100,000 goes to, that's all of our technology purchases. Again, less as end-of-the-year spending money where we put and purchase some smart boards, which we have done in the past. All of our copy paper, all of our, which you don't even think about, just copy paper alone, the expenditure's there. Academic classroom supplies, all of our art, music, culinary supplies, which are all consumables. You know, consume, obviously culinary and art is all consumable. Music, you know, they change things up, they play different songs, so sometimes we need to get new literature in the library. All library media supplies, all book purchases, that, when I say book purchases, there, I'm saying library. So, that, library doesn't have a textbook line item, so it just falls under instructional supplies. So, even, even keeping current in the library and media center, you know, that, you start looking at all the different areas without $100,000 being suspended. All subscriptions, like turnin.com, fax on file, worldbook online, all those things are paid for individually through the instructional supply line items by the departments.
How much is an average book, average? I know that they all range.
Are we back on textbooks?
No, they, they're pretty expensive.
You can buy.
It varies.
A math book for $65, but if you're buying.
Science.
Physics, you're going to pay 100.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so, it's, and we're also faced with the change in the curriculum for Common Core standards, which our, our current textbooks have put out transitional information to go from the Massachusetts standards with the Common Core and without, so, but there is a need, at least in math, to replace every single math textbook in the district.
Wish you could have a book drive.
And our next cost area for us is dues and memberships. This is really actually a very small area for us, but it is divided up in the budget, so I wanted to present it here. And it's an area, actually, we've knocked things down a little bit. I'm getting ahead of my own presentation a little bit, but each department chair, in essence, what I do with them is I say to them, "You have your three line items, we do a level funded budget, so you can take those three line items, add them up," so they add up to $10,000. Each year, they change how that $10,000 is divided up into the three, the instructional supplies, textbooks, dues and memberships. Slowly, they've basically really pulled almost all their money out of dues and memberships. And so, to FY14, we only have $2,766 proposed there. You know, and that pays for things like some clubs and activities, we have a math team, it pays for their dues to join the math league. Our geography bee, which we run, there's a cost associated with being involved in the National Geography Bee, pays for some musical, music festivals, and some memberships that the music teachers have to have to participate in music festivals. So, we do have certain teachers that they have to belong to a group to participate in certain organizations, certain activities for the students. So, most of the dues and memberships that we're really paying out of these line items come from those things the teachers have to belong to for our students to participate in activities. And, like I said, it's a really small amount of the overall budget. You know, and then some affiliations, the National Science Teachers Association, the American Psychological Association are a couple that we pay for. But like I said, it's a small part of the school-wide budget. And then, just our last area is our general office supplies and expenses. And we're keeping this area exactly the same, $33,275. This would go for some, any professional development, this is separate from the district-wide professional development, so the building level also has a professional development budget, which we could, at the building level, choose to send teachers off for a specific activity and support that. All of our posters and printing, so every letter that we send home within the district all gets paid for, you know, in terms of the stationery, the paper, the letterhead, the letterhead for the discipline referrals, all those type of things you may not even think about, that all goes under that process of printing. You know, general office supplies. Big one in here is actually graduation expenses, which is between $6,000 and $7,000, so just running the high school graduation generally costs us in that ballpark. And then the dues and memberships that we, as the, as the high school have to participate in. For example, NEAS, we are a NEAS member, that's $3,500. We have to pay a membership fee to be a member of the MIAA, so our students can participate in athletics, that is also, that's $4,500. So, all of those things fall under general office supplies and expenses. So, any questions on the general allocation or breakdown of the budget at the middle high school? I just talked about the process a little bit, but we'll outline it here. So, at the beginning, as we begin the new budget process, I'll put the previous budget out to the department chairs, and I'll tell them that they can allocate the money as appropriate within their line items. So, they make the decisions of how much money shit goes into textbooks, supplies, and dues and memberships. That varies from year to year, so if you looked at our budget over three or four years, you would see there'd be variations in all the line items because they make adjustments there. The department chairs meet with the teachers within their individual department. And I know that at our building, every single department chair has a meeting with their teachers, in which they say, "What are your needs right now, or do you think you, or what are your needs coming into next year?" So, that's definitely a discussion that occurs within each department. The department chairs also develop and do justifications for all of our Level 2 requests. Level 2 requests are, is kind of our wish list of things beyond this building-based budget of $212,000 that we think that we need. All Level 2 requests are then prioritized by our school council. I actually did that this evening at my school council meeting, so my school council meets the same day that you meet every month, and we always meet at 5:00. And tonight, our meeting, we went through all the Level 2 requests and prioritized them. From that priority list, then we'll look back at that list, if there is some end, some end-of-the-year spending. It's been a while since we've taken in a Level 2 request into the main budget. I don't know.
At least seven years.
Yeah, and so, it's been a while since we've said, "Here's a Level 2 request," and now we can now absorb that into the main budget of the school district. But, if you look at that Level 2 list over time, which I didn't give you, but if I pulled it out and said, "Okay, here's the last five, two years of Level 2 requests from the middle high school," a lot of those things have been purchased. They've been purchased because, through some end-of-the-year spending. They've been purchased through grants, that Liz has worked very hard to procure. They've been purchased through community groups like the boosters who are here this evening. So, musical instruments for the middle high school were on the Level 2 list for four years running, and they weren't getting purchased. So, the music boosters said, "We really feel like this is a need," and they went out and they, as you know, they raised the money to purchase those instruments. So, this year, those instruments are not on the Level 2 list. Something, I believe the language lab was paid through, through capital outlay. That's going back a little bit, but I believe we have a fairly state, well, fairly new language lab, which seven to, six to nine years ago, well, probably about closer to nine years ago, was when that language lab was redone. But that was actually done as a capital expense through the town, and that's, but that was on the old high school Level 2 request list. So, over time, a lot of these things still get done, so there's a value to doing the Level 2 list because it establishes priorities, gets us thinking about things that need to happen, and then through various means, we work real hard to try to meet as many of the Level 2 requests as we can. Though, a lot of the other things are not funded, so I shouldn't, I don't want to make it too rosy that all these things eventually get done, but people work at it and try to get as many of them done as they can. Each of the department budgets are brought to me, I approve the budget in its whole for the building, I then present that budget to Liz and Pat, and then it's approved at the district level. And then, we're here this evening. So, any questions on process?
Is this Level 2 list that you gave the requests, is this prioritized or is this random?
This is, the Level 2 requests that you have in front of you today, it's not actually all of them, so it's a sampling of them. I broke into three groups, you know, really, and it's really two groups, textbooks and technology. You'll see a lot of our, a lot of our Level 2 requests go around textbooks and technology. And then, it's not the prioritized list, because we just did that this evening.
Okay.
At school council. So, we looked at, you know, textbooks and technology, not here in any order, but probably the biggest need is the, maybe I should change the, I'm going along, oop, backing up, too far. So, the Algebra 1, the Algebra 2 texts, in terms of, there are textbooks that are currently most not aligned with the new Common Core math standards, so they probably need to be replaced to match the new Common Core standards. We talked a little bit about US history and the French and the physics, actually, we talked about a lot of these. There is a, there is a request for middle school science textbooks, six through eight. We might hold on that request a little bit because there are some new science standards coming out, and we might want to wait until we align our new middle school textbooks with the science standards. But there is a need for replacement of those books, but in my mind, that would be a lower priority on the list from the other, the other ones that are here. And then, a lot of our Level 2 requests, like I said, this isn't the whole list, they are, a lot of them focus around technology needs, smart boards, LCD projectors for the classroom. You know, I really think, I feel like we, as a building, in terms of equity, should really move towards having almost every teacher have an LCD projector, which we don't. We have a lot, so there's a lot of teachers that do. But there are still situations where a teacher, teaching one subject, and another teacher teaching that same subject, may not both have an LCD projector in their room. They might have access to it, because we have some on mobile carts, we have some we can take out to the library. The teachers, in my mind, have really become strong users of that LCD projector, just the number of things that they can do with it, and interact with students from sources on the internet is tremendous. And, the reality is, we just don't, not every teacher has one. And sometimes, there's a little bit of sharing of resources of those, and I think there'd be a real value towards, moving towards that direction. But obviously, in any new school that is built, there's an LCD projector in every single classroom. And that's just like an expectation of what would be there in a modern classroom. And, so, we're not quite there yet, so there's a lot of those LCD requests.
Well, to that end, Scott, you say seven. How many more would it take to get one in every classroom?
I don't know if I have, I don't, I can get back to on that number, I don't have that off the top of my head of what it would take to have one in every single classroom. I know that it's, it's, there are various places, so the middle school art doesn't have one. It varies in social studies, so it's not consistent. It varies in social studies, so it's not consistent. It varies in English. Where we do have everyone, every math teacher has one. So every math teacher has an LCD projector and some sort of interactive whiteboard. They're not all smart boards, some of them are a different board that was purchased before the smart boards, but they're all interactive and have the same functionality of a smart board. So every math, every math classroom has that capability.
I think every middle school social studies teacher has an LCD projector.
I believe, believe every science teacher has an LCD projector. And so it's really, the shortfalls are in English and social studies, and then some of the allied arts, where they may not have that. Comprehensive Health doesn't have an LCD projector. Art doesn't have an LCD projector. So I don't know the exact number to get us to everyone having one, but I think we need to move in that direction. And then our other Level 2 requests just fall under, we just, I gave some examples of other things that are on there. You know, a big giant shredder for the guidance department, they could use that. One, the longstanding one, we talked about the culinary arts department tonight, is culinary arts really needs a new refrigerator. There's a little bit of desperate need for that, and I think that's one we might have to push for, or find a way to incorporate that into our regular budget. And we do have one, in my Level 2 requests, there are, there are two, there are two staff positions. And I don't know how far that, where we're going to go with those as a district. One is a library media aide. One of the reports from our NIASK, one of the recommendations in our NIASK report is that we did not have enough staff within the library media center.
We have one now.
We have one for the thousand students. We used to have two, we currently have one. So there is a recommendation that we add some support personnel to the library media center. And then, and this, some of these things, especially the second requests, we might have to do through reallocating our current resources. But we're really talking about maybe adding a health teacher at the middle school based on some of our needs within the school district. And we feel like that's a shortfall within our curriculum, that we are not offering enough help for our middle school students. And the health, we are, all seventh graders currently have a health class, they get a term of health. But to run that class, we're actually pulling from our middle high school health staff. Obviously, we're all one building, but we're pulling from the high school health teachers. And so we've degraded from the high school health a little bit. So we have a pretty strong comprehensive health grader program for ninth and 10th graders. So all ninth and 10th graders take a full year of comprehensive health. One-third of it's in the classroom, two-thirds in the gym. But that program has actually been degraded a little bit by pulling a teacher who would normally teach in that program and having them teach seventh grade health. But we feel like we, there's an absence of the appropriate help that's needed at the middle school level. So we made that decision to do that, but we're kind of, you know, it's kind of an unbalanced stool, I guess. You know, we're just, we're stealing from one group to take to another. So maybe as a building, we have to look at our resources and decide that we want to put a little more priority in looking at our health program for the middle school students. Because we feel, really feel like the middle school is the best, is where we really need to start attacking some of those issues that they would deal with in health, like substances and those types of issues.
I think that's a very important place because it's different than when we were kids. I mean, health is, like you say, with the substances that are available and just the education alone that some kids are exposed to.
You know, between substance and bullying and healthy relationships, I think that some of those conversations really are best suited for middle school students, especially seventh and eighth grade, and I feel like we have to do more there. So there is a, there's a Level 2 request to add a health teacher. You know, obviously, that would be a great scenario, but maybe we have to reallocate within our own resources to do that.
Well, and Liz, a request like that, because we've been kind of talking non-salary type positions in this piece of the budget, would that then shift to the other piece? I mean, the request, or would that stay in this section of the budget?
Well, it's Level 2, but it belongs in the salary and benefits piece. And every year, we've tried, our goal is to at least maintain the staff we have, and we've, we have not been able to do that for the past six years. You know, due to budget constraints, we've, we've lost, well, we lost five positions at the high school last year.
And most of that's because we strive for a level funded budget, not a level service budget. Would that be a fair statement?
No, we actually strive for a level service budget. But when we can't meet it, the only way we can meet it is to cut some of the services. But we really haven't gone down to level funded. Well, a couple of years, we lost ground, but in the past two years, we got slightly more than we did before. So it's kind of a hybrid between level service and level funded. We've never been able to level service, but we haven't had to go as far as level fund, if that makes sense. So, but Scott and Ruby will get, in their salary line item, a certain amount of money. And then it's up to Scott and Ruby to configure what their priority needs are. And then, we talk about it, of course, but if Scott says, you know, I've got to have this health teacher, well, it might mean having bigger English classes or something like that.
That's why I said we might just reallocate our own budget, what's currently there for salaries. But through the Level 2 process, in our mind, is where we can kind of state that need.
You know, in that education reform in 1993, they, you know, the idea was that the principals have the primary decision-making on the hiring of the staff they need because it's only in their knowledge base do you truly understand the needs of the building. So, and I work as hard as I can to support them in getting what they need, so does Pat.
Any thoughts for Scott before we let him go? Thank you, Scott.
Ruby. So now, a quick few reasons I figured out the question.
All right, so it's my turn. So at the elementary school level, just as Scott had mentioned earlier, we are proposing a level funded budget. So if you look at the elementary school budget in FY13, we had a, and this is, just as Scott had mentioned, just at the building level, this is the money that we have at the building level in those four building blocks that you had seen earlier on that screen. So the building budget FY13 was $136,545. FY14, our budget proposal, is that same amount, $136,545. So I wanted to take a look, just as Scott had done earlier. He took a look at, you know, 12 years ago, what was the budget at the building level? It was $247,000, all right? Our FY proposal for 2014 is again, $136,000. So this represents a 45% decrease in expenditures. So there's $110,000 difference. As Scott had mentioned earlier, enrollment was a little bit different. That's the same thing at the elementary school, our numbers were a little bit higher. But again, we're talking about, we're not taking inflation into account. So it's 12 years later, we've cut our costs, and this is what we're dealing with. So if we can, you know, if I'd mentioned, as Scott had mentioned earlier, what is the impact of reductions at the elementary school? And again, we're faced with very similar things that the middle high school does. It limits our investment in technology, that's a big piece for us. We're unable to replace furniture. And when you look at programs, we, you know, can't really fund additional or new programs. So those are very similar things that the middle school, high school is facing. So let's take a look at the, at the building blocks. Scott mentioned the textbooks, the instructional supplies, dues and memberships, office supplies, and expenses. So, let's go ahead, I did a little pie chart, just to break it down a little bit. So if you look at that textbooks and materials section, that's the biggest piece of our, of our pie, so to speak. $62,000 goes to textbooks and materials. And when you look at the instructional supplies, $58,000. And we'll talk specifically about that in a bit, but that's, I'm glad to see that that's where the biggest portion of our money is going to, and I'll explain why. So, let's break this down a bit. So looking at textbooks and materials. So if you look at FY13, our expenditure was $59,951. And our proposal for FY14 is $62,000. This textbook line item accounts for 45% of our total school budget. And when you break that down, as Scott did earlier, I didn't put it in this PowerPoint here, but I configured the numbers, and it's $72 per student when it comes to textbooks and materials. This line item covers things very similar to what Scott said. Consumables, replacement texts, renewals of online accounts. When you look at FY13, we purchased everyday math journals. Math journals, every grade level uses them, they use two math journals. We need to get through the first part of the curriculum with the first journal and the second part. So that, that's grades K, one through five. In FY13, all of the literacy and math consumables for all the grades. So if you look at FY14, again, we need to purchase all of the necessary literacy and math items for all of our curriculum. So that includes everyday math, reading street, empowering writers, assessments, materials, all of those consumables. And so when we talk about consumables, just so that you understand, these are, I mentioned the everyday math journals. These are journals that go in the student's backpack. They go home every day, they're coming back and forth. And so these are, the consumables are items that we can't use again. So there's a, there's an increase in that figure there. So what I wanted to share with you on that is, that is related directly to our science program. There's, we've been, we piloted the FOS science program last year, and it's a research-based program. It's a FOS, basically what happens is the students are involved in one intensive week. At some grade levels, they're involved in two science-intensive weeks. It's a program that, as I mentioned earlier, it's research-based, it's a program that the children are enjoying. And we're actually, within the first year of implementing this program, the pilot program, actually, we saw some increases in our MCAS scores. So there, what happens is the teachers submit to me what they need for replacement materials for the refill kits, for the FOS kits. And that came close to $3,000, I have the exact numbers, but that, that just represents that increase there. So what I, I needed to do, actually, and this happens sometimes, and I needed to transfer money from one line item to another, so that's that increase right there. So when you look at instructional supplies, that accounts for 41% of our building budget. In FY13, that was $63,928. The proposal for FY14 is $58,000. This is where I took that money from, okay? I had to take it from somewhere. So this, approximately $65 per student is what we're looking at here. And this is all technology purchases, software, hardware, all our photocopy paper, all our allied arts consumables, all our materials for music, phys ed, art, and technology. And again, as Scott had mentioned earlier, all library media supplies and book purchases also come from here. Additionally, our subscriptions, we have a subscription to Scholastic News, and let's find out. Any questions so far?
I actually have one. Most of the math programs are reproductibles these days, and you actually end up saving when you figure what you'd have to copy in repairing copy machines and dealing with that. But I do have a question, Liz, about a statement that you had made earlier. Did you purchase the new SRBs for the math program that's been updated for the core with everyday math? Or is it, are we still in the old books but have the new reproductibles?
We're, we're old books with the new reproductibles.
So they really don't match up that?
Yeah, there's, sorry. In some cases with the new SRB, there's only like four pages that are different in order to align with the Common Core. So at this point, we're waiting for University of Chicago Press, who is the publisher, to do an entire overhaul for Common Core alignment. And the recommendation from the sales rep is if there were a place that you could kind of squeeze a little bit more out of your budget, it would be aimed towards consumables and retain the SRBs that you used to have. And obviously, teachers are aware that you need to integrate traditional algorithms and stuff like that, but, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next piece of our pie, and that's the dues and memberships. And this is actually our smallest portion of the budget, this is actually 1.2%. FY13 was $1,580, and our proposal for the FY14 school year is $1,580. This covers seminars and training. And, you know, just, just also to mention, you know, this covers affiliations. We actually have a couple in our building as well, you know, Scott probably has a few more. But, you know, we do have teachers that belong to different associations, and this helps to fund, to cover that, those memberships and dues. And then the next piece is our office supplies and expenses. That is 11% of our budget. That figure is a little bit less than it was last year. So the reason for this is there was a line item where we weren't actually getting that, that money wasn't being used in the last couple of years. So we were able to decrease that amount and move some of that money into the textbooks and materials line item. This office supplies and expenses covers postage and printing. We send out mailings throughout the year. Every summer, in August, we send out a letter to every household regarding placement. We send out MCAS letters during the school year. When, once we get MCAS, we typically get it in the beginning of the school year, and we're sending out that information to parents. We send out letters throughout the year. It just had a new teacher, actually, an interim. I, you know, gathered some information, put a letter together, and send that home to parents. So that's just to give you a little idea. Office supplies and contracted services, that's all of the supplies that we need in the office for photocopying, sending information to parents. We have been able to move quite a bit towards an electronic newsletter, and that is helping us tremendously. But there still is a lot of, actually, the contracted service piece, that's to cover copy machine contracts that we have. We lease, we have three copy machines in the EKW building and three copy machines in the John Carver building. And then the dues and memberships, that science affiliation snuck in there, I don't know how, so that doesn't go there. But this ASD, ASCD and MEZBA membership, that's actually for the three administrators in the building. We belong to those, and those come with lots of benefits. So those are some actually really good benefits affiliations to belong to. Scott spoke a little bit to you, he spoke quite a bit to you about the budget process. At the elementary school level, I will share how we, how this process works. The end of October, we're gathering some information and sending information out to the lead teachers in early November. And their, their responsibility is to meet with their grade-level colleagues and build their budget and let me know what they need. The literacy teachers also meet with the literacy director and the math coach to determine their grade-level curriculum needs. From there, they submit to me everything that they need to provide an education to the children, the curriculum materials. Our special education teachers, allied arts teachers, reading teachers and nurse leaders, they also submit their budget needs to me. I gather all of that information, and from there, I build the budget. The lead teachers also help to develop and justify Level 2 requests. But just so that you also understand, the Level 2 requests, anyone, any of the teachers can submit a Level 2 request. Then they are prioritized by the school council. I also met with school council today. I also met with school council today. Our meeting was at three o'clock, and we were able to go through our Level Twos and prioritize. So then the entire budget is improved, approved by, by me, and then I submit it over to central office. So just to give you an idea of some of the Level II requests, and these aren't, these aren't in priority, I just, as I mentioned, just prioritized them earlier today with school council. Mounting the smartboards in this was for, we had a request both for fifth grade and for fourth grade. And, you know, at the fifth grade level right now, we have class size of 27 and 28. So our smartboards take, you know, they take a good amount of space, because it's not only the smartboard that's on its stand, but there's a computer cart with the projector and the computer, and it's usually set back 15 to 20 feet, and that takes a good amount of space. So, you know, the fifth grade teachers felt that this was something that they'd like to submit for Level II, because if you, if you mount the smartboard, then you're also mounting the projector, and you have some space there that you're possibly able to save. So that's a request from fifth grade, also a request from, from fourth grade. We have some basketball hoops in the recess yard that were taken out in, during the summer due to rotting of the, the poles. And those haven't been replaced, so that's something that we'd like to, to replace. That was submitted as a Level II. And just so you know, to mount the smartboards, we're looking at a figure of $600 per smartboard to mount. What you have to do with the projector is you have to also run wire so that you can have electrical to support the powering of the projector. So that's that figure. To replace the hoops in the recess yard would be $2,000 per hoop. Then we have desktop stands with dry erase boards, and it's basically could be like a, it looks like a, sort of like a trifold that would, that you'd be able to stand on your desk and write on as you instruct the students, and that's a request from fourth grade. An IMC circulation desk. And as I looked back at previous Level II requests, this circulation desk has been in every year. And the figure this year is about $7,000 to replace the circulation desk. IMC computer chairs, and these as well have been, there was a request for 30. We do have 28 computers in our IMC, 28 chairs. So these chairs have, we've used them for a while. They're, they're still functioning, but we will be needing to look at replacing these chairs. The U Glides are for the computer chairs. There's a request from our school psychologist for a contour-back chair, and I'm actually going to be able to take that off the list, because we actually did get a donation. So then the, the flash drive. And these flash drives are a request from fifth grade, so that as the students work on their science projects and other projects that they're doing, they could save them on the flash drive, transport it back and forth. So then the other things that I felt as the school principal that I really should share with you, because these are things that we deal with on a daily basis, it would be really nice to have at least three computers in every classroom. We do have, there is at least one computer in every classroom for, for the classroom teacher. But in, in looking ahead and, and planning ahead to have some more technology, that would certainly enhance our program. Expanding the parking lot, we deal with issues, challenges with our parking lot on a daily basis. So as the principal, I really feel it's important for, for everyone here to know that that's, that's something that can be very frustrating for our parents and our families and for faculty as well. We actually don't have enough parking space for, for faculty. So that's just something that we really need to be looking at down the road right now. Our neighbors across the street have been very gracious in, in allowing us to use the parking lot at Sedell's, and we appreciate them sharing that with us. And what we've been able to do is have a good relationship with them and just give them an, an advance notice of when we're going to have a, a big event. And that, you know, that just helps alleviate a little bit of, you know, challenges on their part, too. And I ask our families if, you know, they could just reserve the first seven or eight spots in front of Sedell's for, for their customers. So, but that's just something that we really need to be looking ahead. The electrical system is also, you know, something that we need to be, Pat had mentioned that earlier. That's just something that we're going to, we deal with on a daily basis as well. And as I looked at the other Level II requests in the previous years, we've had the classroom wall, building classroom walls. That's, that's come up every year. That's something that, that's, you know, we, we made a, a change this year where we had all of the grade three classrooms, we moved them to the Governor John Carver Building. But our, our challenges with, with any pod not having classrooms still remains. Our problem didn't go away. It, it has helped, but we still need every bit of classroom space in both buildings. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're still thinking about the, the fact that we do have classrooms that do not have walls. Any questions?
The computers in the classrooms, is, is the capacity there for that? What is the need there? Is the need just the computers, or is there a lot of hookup and the possibility of the server being able to handle that?
Well, that's the other issue. So it, right.
So it's not just getting?
It's not just getting the computers. That's a whole nother issue, as Scott had mentioned, you know, if we're going to talk about, you know, as he was mentioning, textbooks and, and, and a tablet, you know, yes, yes, we could use technology, but there are other issues in the Erwin K. Washburn Building and Governor John Carver Building that we will face with, you know, bandwidth and all of that, that, that also need to be considered.
Has there been any, any look into like a possible portable lab that might go around kind of thing, where they can take it to the classrooms?
We actually do have a portable lab. We have a, a mobile cart right now with approximately 28 laptops, but the laptops that are on that cart right now will take a charge of about an hour.
The batteries are all done.
So, so we can use them, but, but we have to plan really well.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Ruby.
Thank you, Ruby. Thanks, Scott. It takes an enormous amount of time and work to get the budget from the teachers and the people in the classroom to the principal level, and our decisions have to be made. And I really want to thank you for putting all the time and effort with a third to half as much money as that was spent in the past. So it's, it's very, very challenging. So I really want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This, this isn't on the agenda, but I think this is a good place to put it. It's basically just an announcement, so it's not anything you need to make a decision about, and I'll turn it over to Meredith.
All right. I'm actually going to pass around my iPhone, which might be dangerous, but I'm going to do that anyways. Liz had come to a meeting that we had amongst administrators and talked a little bit about parent feedback that she had received in regards to communication. Thank you. In regards to communicating with parents, and one of the recommendations that came from parents in particular was finding an interface that kind of met their lifestyle, and they had suggested trying to find something related to the smartphone. And whether it be bus schedules or lunch menus or that sort of thing, you know, we're not all tethered to computers anymore, and oftentimes, when we go to search for information, we're looking at it through the vehicle of our smartphones or iPhones or Androids or tablets and that sort of thing. So kind of an emergent technology or an emergent communication tool for school districts is to engage in setting up an app. And we found a whole bunch of different options and a whole bunch of different price ranges with that, and we opted to go for the freebie. And we thought that it would be a great trial, and if folks liked it, that we could definitely continue with it. But we wanted to make sure that we were being fiscally prudent at the same time meeting the objective, and fortunately, we found a program that would allow for that. So we are currently in pilot phase, and we have a full-launch date scheduled for this weekend, and we'll be publicizing this to parents and to students and to the community, and we'll be putting a link on our website where people can go, and if they have a smartphone, either an Android operating system or an iPhone operating system, they can download it. And the format is not overly customizable. That's part of having a free program, but it's ample for our needs, if not surpassing our needs. And I'll let you go through, but basically, the interface is a whole bunch of little coins, and if you click on the coins, each icon stands for something different, and you can go in and you can look at things like lunch menus, bus schedules, and that sort of thing. Additionally, one of the benefits of this particular technology is we can set up users within our school district, and parents can opt in to different groups. And I was talking to Ruby today about parents opting into like what bus their student is on, but you can also opt into certain athletics, you can opt into certain clubs, you can opt in to the elementary building project. There are different things that you can opt into. And then users can push out, or administrators can push out notices for parents. And one of the options might be, you know, come and support the Carver Crusaders this Saturday at our homecoming game. Another option might be, as you download it right now, another option might be, you know, chess club is going to get out at 4:15 as opposed to 4:00, or bus two is going to be late, or we're not running a late bus, or as a reminder, we have parent-teacher conferences tomorrow. So the gamut of what you can actually schedule and push out to parents depends on what parents opt into. That way, they're not receiving things that are not important to them, and they're choosing what is the most important, and from that, they're able to kind of discriminate and have a more customizable experience. So I'm going to pass out a card to each of you, and you're welcome to use it or take it with you, and then we'll be marketing to all parents in between now and the middle of January. So I just wanted to give you that update and let you know where we stand.
There is a little minimal advertisement running across the bottom from Justin's mainly, which is the class ring company who funds this development of this website, because free seemed like the best price. And we did pilot with a few high school parents who gave us feedback that it wouldn't matter to them, it was free, if it had this little advertisement on the bottom. So I'm very excited about this. I think it has great potential for principals and, well, the music boosters, anyone to stay in touch with any constituents that want information. And I think that as time goes by, if this has a lot of community buy-in, it could replace something that we pay for, which would, you know, be the connected phone call, you know, but you'd have to have a lot of buy-in before, you know, and they can track how many people we have using it. So, and I just, I really commend Meredith. I asked her to help find this for us, and she found four or five, and we looked at it as an alt team, and this was the, definitely the most economical and really one of the most versatile that we found. So we're, we're very excited to launch it to the whole community. We'll do a press release, and we'll talk about it again in January, so that everybody hears it many times. So thank you very much, Meredith.
Thank you, Meredith.
I just thought it fit in here, so Scott could have a chance to get ready.
Good evening again.
Welcome back.
So I just want to talk to you a little bit about our SAT scores and our AP scores. And similar to the other discussions we've had, I know you've had school committee meetings in terms of MCAS scores and student performance, the SAT scores and the AP scores are reflective of strong schools, but, strong scores by our students that we're proud of, and we've really shown some improvement in the area of both, enough so that we have been named as an AP honor roll school, and we'll talk about that at the end of the presentation of how did we get that designation. But we'll start with the SAT scores. And really, for us as a school, we've had a little bit of a shift in terms of our scores that we've been able to maintain. And I guess the challenge for us is going to be, are we ready to go to the next level? Or are we ready, are we going to stay where we've been? So if you looked at our MCAS scores over 10 or 15 years, for a long time, we were stuck below both the state average, not below the national average, but below the state average in ELA and in math. And our scores are really stuck around 505. You could look at our scores, and we'd see a lot of 505, 506, 507. But within the last five years, we've seen a little bit of a jump. So the first representation up there is our verbal scores, our verbal SAT scores. And our color differentiation isn't great, but we are represented by the, I guess I would say that's our white line. So if you go back to 2002 and 2005, in 2002, it was, 491 was our verbal, which was really low. Jumped up to about 505 in 2005. If you look at the years in between that, we, like I said, we were consistently around that 505 mark. Then, starting in 2007, we've made a nice jump, where we've consistently been closer around that 515 range. Well, obviously, I didn't put every score in there, but it was, 527 was a huge year for us. That's that big spike. Then we dropped down for a year, but then the last four years have been 515, 514, 517, 524. And we've outperformed both the national average and the state average in SAT scores. Massachusetts has the highest SAT scores in the country. So for us, that's a good goal for us, to be performing above the state average. And for years and years and years, we did not perform above the state average. Really, that's been a shift that's happened within the last five years. And I guess the challenge now becomes for us to take that next step and to get a little bit higher and become some of the most, more competitive scores within the state. But in terms of our verbal scores, these are really strong, like I said, clearly outperforming the state over the last five years. In math, we also saw a very similar story. So if we look at our math SAT scores, now, we have not done the same job as outperforming the state, but our individual school performance has improved, and it's been above the national average. The story here is similar. You know, for many years, our scores were, that year of 2002 was kind of a low year with the 491. Then we had a series of years of 504, 508, 507. We're always around that 505 mark. So if you look at 2005, it was right at 505 again. And if you went back from 2002 to 1995, it's that same thing. Just we were there, we were in a malaise of 505. It's kind of where we were. But again, starting with the 2000, the class of 2007, we took a jump, and we stayed up. The class of 2007 was an extremely strong class, you know, they had the 527 verbal, and they had the 521 math. But then the last five years have been right around 515, pretty much right at 515, 516, 518, 518, 517, 517. And we've been outperforming the national average now in math. We want to look to see if we can go after that state average, where the states performed a little bit better. But, so that's kind of, that's kind of our goal, to see again if we can make that next, that next jump. In terms of our writing scores, and I, I think looking at SAT scores is always good in terms of, it's sort of like our 10th grade MCAS. It's an end product. So the SAT scores are an end product. These, these are the scores of a graduating class. So how do they determine these scores? Maybe I should have given that information first. But the numbers that are represented on this graph, and then I, I think you each have the actual, the scores for each individual year, which I still think is a very nice presentation of the numbers. But how they determine that SAT score is based upon after the kids graduate. So I don't get this report until like September, so 2012, I got it in September of this year for the graduating class of 2012. They take the student's best SAT scores, and then they add them up and do an average. So for verbal, the student might take it four times. They take their best verbal score. So they take the best verbal score of every graduating senior, add them up and divide by the number of students who took the test, which for us is generally in the 80s. We have usually 80 to 90 seniors take the SAT by the time they graduate. You know, and so some students take it three or four times, some students take it once or twice, but the number is determined by- But the number is determined by adding up the best score of each student and dividing by the number of schools, students who took it. So it really is an end result. And I think it's really a positive statement for the school district that on, especially on the ELA side of the, of the standard in terms of writing and the verbal score, we pretty consistently over the last five years have scored above both the state and the national average. And again, Massachusetts having the strongest SAT scores within the country. So I think that's a good, a good indicator for the school district in terms of the skills that students have upon graduation. So in writing, the writing test just began in 2006. That was the first year that the writing test was administered. Again, that class of 2007 had an extremely high score of 535, which was just outstanding. So they were kind of off the charts. So 2007 was off the charts across the board. But our scores have remained strong since there. You know, 511, 522, 515, 509, 509, scoring both above the national and the state average. So we've been happy that over the last five years, we've consistently scored well in the end product of SAT results. And our, our goal would be to take another step and see if we can get our average score to be, you know, above 520. And I think even at our last, at our last meeting, we recognized that we had a couple of students score a perfect score of 800. And we sort of, we officially received those results. So in this year's graduating class, the class of, you know, 2013, there are going to be a couple of students who had a perfect score of 800 on the math portion of the SAT exam, which is an outstanding accomplishment. And it also helps with the average. Put an 800 in there, that's going to be a good number.
We haven't ever had this wonderful success. So in most communities, the school committee gives a specific award to students with perfect scores on their SAT. So I would highly recommend that, I'd happily take care of ordering this award. Usually it's a plaque.
And we'll present it at convocation at the end of the year. And we did, we did a little bit of research of it and we only came up with one other student that we know of. In the 20 years I've been at the schools, had a perfect score. So to have two students in the same, in one year, get a perfect score is just again, a really strong showing. So one, one student got a perfect score in, in math. And the, and one student got a perfect score in the history SAT two, which is a subject-specific test, which we don't have all the results here for. We actually, we don't have a large number of students take the subject-specific tests. But Alex Burr scored the perfect score in math and Dan Farkins scored this perfect score in the history section.
And you said there was, what, only one student who?
So mine, the research we've done, we had one other student in the past get a.
Can you remember who that was?
I believe it was John Crooks. Which is going back to like 1996, 1997, in that area. So overall, I think us, we, you know, I think the scores are a good reflection of the end product of our school and is a positive reflection of the successes that we've had. So I guess before we talk about AP, we can, I'll take any questions you might have about the SAT scores from this past year. So AP results. And again, I've given you a chart with all the individual scores. I don't have that represented here. I think it's, it's just a difficult thing to digest and look at in terms of in a PowerPoint. This, because there's a lot of information there. But ultimately, based upon our scores, Carver Middle High School met the criteria to be an AP honor roll stu, AP honor roll school. What that means is we increased our AP enrollment by more than 11%. And the percentage of our students who scored three or higher on their AP exams either stayed the same or went up. So we had more students taking AP exams, but we maintained our level of performance. And that's what you need to do to become an AP honor roll school. AP exams are scored from, from one to five, with five being the highest score, three being considered the passing score. So they use three as the benchmark of student performance. The AP's, each AP course, the curriculum in the AP course is supposed to be equivalent to a survey of that course at the college level. And students, depending on the college, can earn college credit for the course that they've passed a three or higher on at Carver Middle High School or in any school. So not all colleges accept AP scores. And some colleges only accept a score of four or higher, some accept a score of three or higher. But some of our students do earn college credit based upon their AP performance. Just so how did, how do we meet this distinction? In 2011, we had 63 students take a total of 103 AP exams. We had 80 scores of three or higher, which was 78% of our students. So 78% of the exams that our students took, they scored a score of three or higher in 2011. But then you see a big jump in 2012, so we met the 11% increase. We had over 150, we had 81 students take 150 AP exams. We had 117 scores of three or higher, representing the exact same number of 78% of students scoring a score of three or higher on their AP exams. So we increased enrollment, increased opportunity, increased exposure, while maintaining high levels of rigor and student success. So that's how we've met the distinction of becoming an AP honor roll school. The value of increasing enrollment is, there's a lot of research. And sometimes, you know, sometimes you hear a research article, you say, boy, that really makes sense. And they really had to do a study to figure this out. But there, a lot of research says that students who are exposed to an AP curriculum, even if they only score a score of two, that they are a lot more successful in college. So exposure to a rigorous AP curriculum in high school increases their chances of being successful at a four-year college or university. Like I said, I think most people would say, yeah, that kind of makes sense. But even, there's a lot of push to have students take AP courses just to reinforce that concept of students should be given a rigorous curriculum. And the more students that you have taking a rigorous curriculum, the more you're preparing them to be successful beyond high school or beyond whatever level they're in, whether it's elementary school, middle school, high school. That, that is always true. Even if they may not score well on the exam. So the college board would argue that have as many students take AP courses as you can, because you're just preparing them to be more successful. You know, in terms of our actual percentage, our AP courses are only offered to juniors and seniors. We have one sophomore AP course. The majority of them are offered to juniors and seniors. There's only a couple of courses at the junior year and then there's a lot of courses within the senior year. And, but we've changed what we've done a little bit and that's why our enrollment's gone up. So why, why do we have such an increase in enrollment? Why do we go from 130, 103 to 150? Because that's a pretty significant increase in enrollment in one year. That happened because of, of these factors. Number one, we joined virtual high school. And now we have students taking virtual high school AP courses that we can't offer in the building. So we don't have enough students who are prepared or at this time to take AP physics, but we have students take AP physics online. We just don't have the staff to offer AP music theory. But we had a student take AP music theory online. So through the virtual high school program, we're able to offer some AP courses that we were not able to offer through the regular school day. So that helped increase our enrollment. We added a new AP course. We added AP psychology. So last year was the first year we taught AP psych. AP psych is a course that's available for juniors and seniors. So that increased our enrollment. We also moved AP European history from 12th grade to 10th grade. Not a lot of schools offer an AP course under 10th grade. Some schools offer 10th grade AP courses. And European history is kind of a split. It's kind of offered all over the place. If you want to cross the country, some schools offer it in 10th grade, some schools 11, some schools 12. We had always historically offered it in 12th grade. But the reality is, we have a lot of AP offerings in 12th grade. And, and a lot of times, some of our students would not, would choose not to take AP European. So if they had a choice of four or five AP courses, and four AP courses is a tremendous load. We have very few students who take four, but we do have some who take four. Three is a tremendous load. But when they looked at their range of offerings in senior year, which is AP English, possibly AP Environmental, possibly AP Biology, possibly AP Calculus, possibly European, possibly AP Psych. You know, the AP European always kind of was the last choice. I don't know why they're so against those history people. But, you know, the AP, the AP European would have an enrollment of four or five students and then we'd have to make a decision, we're going to run this class with five or six kids in it. So we, you know, we, we knew that AP European was offered at several different grade levels. We knew some schools offered as low as 10th grade. And as a building, we said, you know what, maybe it make, maybe it make a good idea. Instead of having this conflict and students always opting out of AP European, why don't we make this our introduction AP course in essence? Move it to the 10th grade, make it our 10th grade AP course. It's the only 10, it's the only AP course students can take in 10th grade. And then we have a lot of students who say, I want to, I want to step up to that challenge. I want to see if I'm ready for an AP curriculum. So originally in European, I think we started the year with 25 students enrolled. And I think it ended up dropping down to, the number's right in front of me, it's like, look at it. It ended up dropping down to 18. So, you know, some of those students decided, maybe I'm not ready for an AP curriculum. But we started with 25 students enrolled, dropped to 18. But that's a much better number than we had before. You know, if you looked at the chart, the years before that AP European history, we had nine, five, four, five, five, six. So we increased our enrollment there. And it gives students a good opportunity to try an AP course within their sophomore year. So that was a shift. And then for last year, we just had an extremely large enrollment in senior AP English. AP Literature had an enrollment, I believe, of 31 students. So it had 31 students in it. We actually offered two sections, which he historically had not done. We just put the challenge out to a good number of students and they took that challenge to take the AP English course within their senior year. And remember, last year's graduating class was small. The graduating class last year was 102 or 103 students. So it's 31, not exactly 31%, but close, 30% of our seniors took AP English, which is, which I think is, is a great number. You know, so based on our performance and based on our increased enrollment, we are an AP honor roll school and we, we are proud of that designation. So then I will entertain any questions you have about our AP results.
And we have a plaque for your office and your stores, Scott. Good job, congratulations. We also have, you're welcome. You earned it, your students earned it. There's posters about as big as one of these windows, 10 of them, they'll be all over town in the town buildings that say that Carver Middle High School.
It's on our website?
It's on our website.
It's on our website, there's a banner they put on our website. So we, we are excited to have that designation. Now we just have to increase our enrollment by 11% again. And maintain our performance to earn that distinction next year as well.
So that's what you have to do year after year?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Now, I, I don't have kids up there yet, obviously. But I know you said the college boards would say it's a good idea to have as many kids as possible in AP.
It's also financially lucrative for them.
Yeah, of course. Do the administrative admissions people at the colleges look more favorably on the students who've taken AP courses versus?
Absolutely, absolutely. So if you're going to be, if you're going to be applying to competitive universities, Ivy League schools, there, there's going to be an expectation that you're enrolled in AP courses. It's a little, it's an interesting story because, you know, for example, a school like Harvard, they want to see those AP courses on your transcript, but they don't want to give you credit for them.
Giving you no credit.
So Harvard, Harvard does not give any credit for AP courses. So our graduate last year who was, who, Andrew Lacy, who was accepted into Harvard and is attending Harvard, I think he took.
Very viral video, is he not?
Yeah, I think he took seven AP courses, but didn't get any over his high school career. Or definitely six, six or seven, but he did not gain any credit for his AP scores at Harvard. Because if, if they gave him credit for six classes, that's a semester.
Or a little bit more.
Or maybe a little bit more than a semester that students don't have to pay for. And there was actually an interesting article in the Globe about a month ago, based on that concept of as colleges are beginning to say, less and less schools are accepting the AP scores. Because there really has been a push nationwide. There's been a couple of different things going on, but there's been a big push nationwide. Even this, this program that the college boards to have students take AP courses. But with more students taking AP courses and more students scoring three or higher, which you think are all good things, the colleges are starting to pull back on where they want to give you the credit for those three or higher. And, you know, obviously the cynical person would say that's because that, that's, if you come in with five or six classes, that's at least a semester that you don't have to take at their school. So it's, it'll be interesting to see how that plays out in the next five to 10 years. But sorry, I, I digress a little bit.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Patrick with budget and facilities.
Okay. I think the, the budget was kind of an added line in there. I'm going to just go straight to facilities. But there's just, just a few issues, but a couple that were kind of significant that happened of late. Couple of things at the, and those are at the high school, but a couple of things at the elementary building is we, we did have a small office in the back building that seemed to be having a, at least an odor of mold or whatever. So over the weekend, we emptied it out, pulled the rug, put in a new tile floor and seemed to have taken care of that. So we, we did that internally. The front building, there was, one of the boilers actually had a defective gas valve that we had to have someone come in and replace. That was about 800 bucks. The enunciator panel for the fire alarm system was installed last week. So that, that completes that issue, that part of the, the lightning damage.
At the middle high school?
At the middle high school, that's correct. We had some repairs that had to be made to the high school gym floor. Fix, temporarily fix some, what Dave was considering hazards in the, in the synthetic flooring. The seams where the joints join together are starting to separate due to the age. This seems to be getting more and more prominent up there. It seems to be an ongoing issue and the high school, replacement of the high school gym floor has been in the five-year plan for a while and continues to be on there. So we might have to pull it up a little bit. But just this latest cost to fix that was about $2,200. And then last Friday, we had another burst coil in one of the units that are inside some of the, some of the rooms. Those have been bursting ever since, ever since the school was built. It's just a lousy design in those things and they're constantly bursting coils. When I was here before, we did, we, we had made quite a bit of progress in that in at least mitigating the burst coils, not eliminating them. And they still burst from time to time. As you've got a, an air conditioning coil inside, it, it ices up, but it's so close to the hot water coil that it freezes it and then it bursts. And then when it thaws out, all the water comes leaking out. So this happened up in a computer lab up in the high school. And it happened Friday night during the overnight hours. The water that was in the line that burst was warm water, no, actually it was hot water, it was 170 degrees. So that sprayed out into the room, filling it with warm water, steam, humidity. And it was a computer lab. So the burst coil was, was, was repaired. We got some large capacity dehumidifiers into the room and trying to dry that room out, dry the equipment out before even thinking about starting up any of the electronics again. I think at the end of the day today, I think Brian started up a couple of computers and they seemed to be okay. So we're, we're waiting to get an assessment on if there was any damage to any of the technology or the electronic equipment that was in there, including, including a smartboard. But the repairs were made to the coil in any case, and that was about a $2,000 repair. So the thing that we're waiting to know now is in the next day or two after the, after we think that the room and the equipment is sufficiently dried out to try to, to try to boot those back up again and see if there was any damage to the, to the electronics.
So something covered by insurance if we find?
That would be covered by insurance if we, if we have dam, not, the burst coil won't. But if we have damage to the, to any of our equipment, that will be, yeah. They're going to love to hear from us again.
It wasn't a phone system this time.
That's it.
Thank you, Patrick.
So then the last thing is application for field trip in April to the Grady's Music Festival. The chorus goes to Six Flags. The chorus goes to Six Flags in Agawam, and so it's, because it's a little further White Need School Committee approval, and I do recommend it, it's an integral part of their performance strand for the music program.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the field trip. You said April, but this is May.
You're right, it is May.
Okay. May 17th to the Great East Festival at Six Flags.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Paul's second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed, it's unanimous.
Okay, well, then I'll just need your signature.
The official signature, yes. With that, I'll open up for reports in the school committee. Any reports this evening?
Just a reminder of our concerts coming up this week at all schools. I know we touched on them earlier, but I just wanted to remind everybody to put them on the calendar if you haven't already, and see that everyone enjoy.
Yes, sir. With that, we just want to extend to Mr. Watercore our well wishes and good luck to you in, in your new endeavor, and we were grateful to be able to have you for a year, and good luck in, in your future there. And to Kathleen, as she joins our team moving forward. With that, I will look for a motion to move to our next session.
Somebody needs my permission.
All right, I will make a motion to adjourn our regular meeting and go into executive session not to return or general session.
For the purpose of?
For the purpose of continuing discussions about the superintendent's contract.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.